Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, little fella, little boy, little boy. Slow down, slow down. Come here. Can you sit? We have a Jack Russell. He's got wiry hair and a little wiry personality, too. He's got a lot of energy. He's choking himself. Come here, baby, sit. Can you sit? Sit down. Sit down. But he's cute. He makes somebody a really great pet, so if you want Jack Russell, come down to our Lorraine County Dog Kennel. And if not, we have other dogs available for you to take home for your family, or you could check us out on our website. So come on down. Thank you. Well, gorgeous. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the July 16th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for the day: courage is doing what you're afraid to do. There can be no courage unless you're scared. You scared?
He's scared every day when he comes here.
Only when I have to meet with you, Commissioner.
I ought to be, let me tell ya.
At 11 o'clock, we're going to have a meeting with the Herring County Commissioners regarding our Jervis Ditch under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated in the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez.
I just have some summary use hires to talk about over at WDA, and that's going to be an ongoing process. I also met with the teams this week, earlier this week, for a few hours, and I want to discuss that with the board and our positioning with regard to preparing for labor negotiations. Both those issues are allowable under the sunshine and moist request. We have an executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting if you do so. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading in the same for Lorraine County Commissioners' meeting minutes for July 9, 2009.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Approve payment to victims of domestic violence, Lorraine County State Harbor Inc., DBA Genesis House, in the amount of $26,043.88, as collected by Lorraine County for the period entered first through June 30, 2009, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 2303.201 and 3313.34 through 39.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Adopt fiscal year 2010 Lorraine County tax budget and prove as submitted in tax booklet.
Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, like most years, the tax budget is just a compilation of the various inputs from all the departments on what they anticipate their revenues to be and operating expenses to be for the next fiscal year, which would be 2010 for us that begins January 1st. Usually the most important work that was done on the annual appropriation in December with regard to funding the departments. I don't want to say that this is more ceremonial, but it's really not what ends up being the overall operating budget of the county. It's just an anticipation of needs and an anticipation of revenue. The Budget Director's here. We need to discuss it further, but it's pretty much within compliance of the code to submit this information every year.
I would like to know what we've included, if we have included the additional sales tax in the 2010 estimated income.
My understanding has been added. Commissioner Kayla also discussed that with me yesterday in a phone conversation. The sales tax revenue are compiled by the Order's Office and submitted to us. Is that correct?
The sales tax for the increase is sitting in its own separate fund, which I showed Commissioner Kayla this morning, right underneath the general fund.
Right.
It has to be segregated, so it is not included in the general fund.
Is it on our sheet?
It is. It looks a little bit low, but revenues have been down for the year.
Approximately $7 million is the guess?
Well, it's the estimate. And we had, usually, we would have seen more from that percentage for half a year, but revenues are down on sales tax, so I think they've actually downturned their thinking a little bit with regard to how much the collections are going to be for half a year in 2010.
Do we still have the five or six months of collections of our in-sales tax? The numbers, where are we at? I've been asked, at least she didn't have them last week.
Well, we don't have the fi-- oh, you're talking about current?
So current. How far are we off? And how far is the jail? Quarter percent down.
Well, the last revenue, last we had was about $1 million with the two of them combined. That was about, what, three weeks ago, four weeks ago?
No, that was five, six weeks ago.
Well, call it to the podium, Lisa. I haven't seen the new number.
Oh, okay.
What's going to be posted for July? And this is for the, what came in, as you know, the general fund and the new increase are not being split right now. We're still waiting on word from our state auditor, Varney Fink and Associates, on how we're going to do it. I do believe the auditor wants to just split it 50/50. So what will be posted next week for July is $2,112,000 for the general fund and the new portion.
I think what Commissioner--
How far are we off?
Right, how much?
This is last year's.
About $897,000 for the general fund.
So we're down 900 grand for our general fund operating.
And the jail is about 453,000 down compared to last year.
How much?
So about 1.4.
453,000.
About 1.4 combined.
And then we had to take into consideration, the state just cut our local government fund by 440,000.
That wasn't a very pleasing email that's sent to you guys.
No, it wasn't.
No. We're looking at, we got about, we got about $1.3 million below what we had for revenue expectations this year.
The, for clarification purpose, because we're talking about something that probably the audience and the public isn't aware of, that, well, obviously, I think the governor is still waiting to sign the budget, but in that budget was an additional reduction in the local government fund from the state that they returned to us. My understanding is they actually downgraded the percentage that they returned, not just the dollars. And we're receiving about 4.4, 440,000 less? Is that an accurate figure?
434,000 in change.
Right.
434, less than was anticipated, and what was anticipated was at least par for last year. We thought there'd be a little dip because the revenues were down in the state, and they have tagged it to certain revenue streams in the state. But I don't think that we anticipated at all that they were going to drop the percentage. We dropped almost three percentage points from the 30 to about 27.2 on a percentage basis. And so now we're facing between the decrease in sales tax revenue, the decrease in local government support, possibly close to $2 million, and anticipated revenue that hasn't come in, on top of all the issues that we dealt with at the beginning of the year. So we're going to have to find ways of shoring it up because there is no money to make up that shortfall.
I was on the Department of Taxation website yesterday, looking at their forecast for next year, talking about a 15% cutoff of 2009 numbers. That's what their investment income is now.
Yeah, our investment income's down also.
Well, it was, pardon me, it was bound to happen, and our investment income's going to be down, too.
Correct.
They're, you know, usually our yield curve will keep us a little bit high while the markets are moving, and then we'll, as we have to go back to market because we mature our notes and the things that we carry in, the instruments that we carry in on investments, then we'll have to buy them at a lower producing rate. So our yield curve's going to be dipping, too. And it has already started to dip, but it's going to probably dip a lot more before it comes back out. I remember back in, I want to say 2003, Commissioner Blair, you may remember, we were down to almost, just about $1 million, $1.2 million in interest income from a high of about $6.5 million.
We just had $8 million a couple years ago.
Two years ago.
Well, that was two years ago. We were able to ride out that spike because we had all that carryover. And so we would dip into the carryover, ride out the yield curve, because it goes up and down every couple of years. We don't have the ability to ride it out anymore. We are living 100% on every income dollar that's coming in. Every time there's a change in the income, there's going to have to be a change in the structure of how the county is doing its work because we don't have that carryover anymore.
Just a little bit of information for you, since you're talking about interest, was the treasurer's estimate next year for his income in interest is 1.9 million dollars.
Wow. And what did he estimate this year?
This year, 3 million.
And he has increased that estimate, or he's working on increasing it, is he not?
I think he's going to wait till a little bit later in the year to try and be, it looks like right now he's going to come real close to that.
But he's doing better than his estimate. So he's really being conservative.
Yes.
I have a question on the criminal justice fund. There has been estimated 7 million for the sales tax income, is that correct?
Yes.
That's a little low, isn't it, for the year? That's an estimate.
It's actually high.
That would be actually for six months' collection.
Right.
We had figured it would be 7.5, right? I just figured with sales tax coming in lower.
Yeah.
Okay.
When it was robust last year, you probably could have figured about 7.8.
Right.
But I think that what's being done, and I have not had the opportunity to ask the question, clearly, the tax is going to be up for an issue of being maintained in November. And I think that the only thing we know for certain is that we'll do, you know, approximately six months worth of collections next year, and I think that that's what the revenue has been banked on. And then that can be revised based upon our successful outcome in November.
Thank you for that clarification. I just want to point out, on the total receipts and balances, on the front page of the information that we have, shows 2007 actual and then 2010 estimated, and there's almost $29 million difference between 2007 and 2010. $29 million less.
Well, that is because of two things: the revenue is down and our carryover is depleting.
Regardless, it's less.
Tough times.
Yep.
Everywhere.
Anything further?
Nope.
Did I make a motion?
No.
Oh, so moved.
I'll second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under LCT, war contract testing builders, LTD, in Monroeville, in the amount of $164,160 for Lorraine County transit maintenance facility showing general trades. Five bids were received on July 2nd, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed letter honored before July 27th and complete honored before October 24th. Authorized County Administrator to notify auditor to release retain and check completion of project, and this will be paid from the construction account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cortez, the construction account under the transit, or what construction account are we talking about?
I'm not completely sure what it is. Ron, you've been working on this issue. I actually believe it's going to be under transit, and it's going to be the FTA money that we receive, but I want to make sure I'm 100%.
Yes, that is correct. Under transit, construction account, and it is FTA dollars. We've split that bid into two different bids. This is so that we can get the steel and the structural stuff. There's a six to an eight-week lead time on ordering this steel, so if we waited to bid the whole project, we'd lose that six to eight weeks.
I'm hoping this is American-made steel.
It has to be.
Yes, it is.
Federal dollars.
Okay, thank you.
So that's another reason to split out, so we can get that going. And we also took a reduction, this is part of the funds, we took a reduction in to move money to operating costs with regard to the stimulus money. So we're just taking a real strong look at what we can do in this project because 10% of the anticipated budget, we moved over to operating transit. So we're just juggling a few things.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Reject bids received on April 3rd for the purchase of 13 new cutaway vans, authorized purchase of vehicles from ODOT, state term contract 248.08 from Tesco. This will be paid from the accounts, C-NAC, toll revenue credit and stimulus. This is 100% capital funding, requiring no local match.
So moved.
I'll second. Discussion. Maybe we're going to talk about what these are.
100%, no federal match. Love that.
No local match.
Or no local match, yeah.
No local match.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Ente has worked very hard on preparing this with First Transit. We're basically buying 13 Ford E-450s with a gross vehicle weight of 14,050 pounds. The cost under the state term bid is going to be 54,837. We actually bid this locally, and the bids were open on April 3rd. As we kept reviewing our bidding process, it was determined there was a technical defect in our bids, and then when the state terms come out, it was fairly comparable in prices. So we've elected to reject our bids and buy off the state term. The 13 buses will not exceed, and it is 100% federal dollars or state dollars, no local money spent. The total for the 13 buses is $7,712,881. It's important that we do this fairly quick, as we talked during the transit hearings, because, A, we're leasing several buses, that as soon as these show up, we can stop leasing, and B, because of the age of our fleet, when this is 100% money to buy, we will reduce our maintenance costs on our old buses, so the cost will go down to operate.
No, only if these ran on natural gas, it'd be all there, huh?
If it would.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Thank you, Ron.
Under the engineer authorized release of Losha Excavating Company, one-year maintenance bond for Copper Creek subdivision, Amper's Township. The storm sewer system was inspected on July 6th, and the township has approved.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have no further reports or discussions this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor.
I need to have an executive session to discuss one, two, three, four, five.
Oh, my gosh. Are you serious?
We can probably get away with four pending litigation issues. Sorry.
We got to include five, just in case it comes up.
Yeah.
Commissioners' report.
I have no comments this morning.
Busy week, especially with what's happened with the budget bill. I'd like to thank the state legislature for finally passing something. We'll see how it goes. The county was saved, some additional expense on the changeover from the family court back to the probate court. Like to thank our representatives for that, and hopefully they'll get the money rolling for all the daycare people, so they can get paid and pay their bills. I know we're waiting on that. And we'll see what happens with the budget and the slots. So hope it doesn't get held up too long, so we can start generating revenue, and maybe our local government funds will go back up where they belong.
Wouldn't that be nice?
That would be different, I think.
Yeah.
I'm finished with my report. Thank you.
Nowaka has sent information to us on their commuter challenge week, which is July 18th to the 25th. There is some information in the back. It's promoting alternative forms of transportation, and during that time, they ask people to try out a greener way of getting to work, such as carpooling, riding transit, bicycling, walking, or telecommuting. The goal of the challenge is to reduce air pollution by introducing the public to alternatives to driving alone. For more information, you can contact their website, and I'll give that information to Hal. And that's it for me.
All of Board Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board? Any comments this morning? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the Administrator and the Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend. Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving 13 counties, secure and safe Ohio RideShare makes it easy to connect with Carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion, while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. 1-800-825-RIDE, or register online at ohiorideshare.com. Point, click, ride. Hey, buddy, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard. I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover. She gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me, and she will pull the covers back, and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorraine County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward. After, you know, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice to kind of turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door, and they wagging their tails and jumping on you, and it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes, when she does something bad, or she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look, so it's kind of hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around, and I was like, oh, my gosh, Lily's going to play now.
Yeah, because like, sometimes, like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail, and then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch, and I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips. She had eaten the whole thing, and I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me, because I was just so upset, but we both lived, and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was, again, just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play, and it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise, because I need to, trying to lose weight. Salem makes me get out of the house every day, and so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble, because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet, because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroke him, so I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good, because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired, and he lays down, and he doesn't want to be bothered, and that's fine with me. So he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow, and he's like, don't bother me, I won't bother you. And sometimes, when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay.
Did you get Salem?
I got Salem at the Lorraine County Dog Pound. He, I found him on the internet, actually. He was, he had, they had his picture on the internet, and so I called, and he was still there, and so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were. So we rode our way home. It was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog, he's, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes, and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, hey, Mom, it's okay. I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorraine County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website and I tell Salem, don't you want a little brother or sister? Because they all, they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorraine County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion, and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Hello. My fellow commissioners and I are here at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel on Hadaway Street, just south of Illyria City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number and can easily be identified, so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a special heart medical care license tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the special heart tag.
The Lorraine County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out. Just click on Dogs to Adopt. There's plenty of dogs to choose from. It's like this little girl right here. This is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you, take the dog out, take it for a walk. But please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call, or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you. Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, little Bella. Little boy. Little boy. Slow down, slow down. Come here. Can you sit? We have a Jack Russell. He's got wiry hair and a little wiry personality, too. He's got a lot of energy. He's choking himself. Come here, baby, sit. Can you sit? Sit down. Sit down. But he's cute. He makes somebody a really great pet, so if you want Jack Russell, come down to our Lorraine County Dog Kennel. And if not, we have other dogs available for you to take home for your family, or you can check us out on our website. So come on down. Thank you. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the July 16th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for the day, courage is doing what you're afraid to do. There can be no courage unless you're scared. You scared?
He's scared every day when he comes here.
Only when I have to meet with you, Commissioner.
You ought to be, let me tell you.
At 11 o'clock, we're going to have a meeting with Huron County Commissioners regarding our jury for ditch. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Paying Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Klar.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
No advances, no rear payments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla. Aye.
No advances, no rear payments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye. Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez.
We just have some summary use hires to talk about over at WDA, and that's going to be an ongoing process. I also met with the teams this week, earlier this week, for a few hours, and I want to discuss that with the board and our positioning with regard to preparing for labor negotiations. Both those issues are allowable under the sunshine and moist weather request. We have an executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting to do so. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading and the same for Lorraine County Commissioners' meeting minutes for July 9, 2009.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Approved payment to victims of domestic violence, Lorraine County State Harbor, Inc., DBA Genesis House, in the amount of $26,043.88, as collected by Lorraine County for the period entered 1st through June 30, 2009, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 2303.201 and 3313.34 through 39.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Adopt fiscal year 2010 Lorraine County tax budget approved as submitted in tax booklet.
Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, like most years, the tax budget is just a compilation of the various inputs from all the departments on what they anticipate their revenues to be and operating expenses to be for the next fiscal year, which would be 2010 for us that begins January 1st. Usually, the most important work that was done on the annual appropriation in December, with regard to funding the departments. I don't want to say that this is more ceremonial, but it's really not what ends up being the overall operating budget of the county. It's just an anticipation of needs and an anticipation of revenue. The Budget Director's here. We need to discuss it further, but it's pretty much within compliance of the code to submit this information every year.
I would like to know what we've included, if we have included the additional sales tax in the 2010 estimated income.
My understanding has been added. Commissioner Kayla also discussed that with me yesterday in a phone conversation. The sales tax revenue are compiled by the Auditor's Office and submitted to us. Is that correct?
The sales tax for the increase is sitting in its own separate fund, which I showed to Commissioner Kayla this morning, right underneath the general fund.
Right.
It has to be segregated.
Is it on our sheet?
So it isn't.
It looks a little bit low, but revenues have been down for the year.
The Criminal Justice Fund. Approximately $7 million is the guess?
Well, it's the estimate. And, you know, we had, usually, we would have seen more from that percentage for half a year, but revenues are down on sales tax, so I think they've actually downturned their thinking a little bit with regard to how much the collections are going to be for half a year in 2010.
Do we still have the five or six months of collections of our sales tax? The numbers, where are we at? I've been asked, at least shooting him last week.
Well, we don't have the, oh, you're talking about current?
So current. How far are we off? And how far is the jail? Quarter percent down?
Well, the last revenue, last we had was about $1 million with the two of them combined. That was about, what, three weeks ago, four weeks ago?
No, that was five, six weeks ago.
Well, call it to the podium, ladies. I haven't seen the new number.
Oh, okay.
What's going to be posted for July? And this is for the, what came in, as you know, the general fund and the new increase are not being split right now. We're still waiting on word from our state auditor, Varney Fink and Associates, on how we're going to do it. I do believe the auditor wants to just split it 50/50. So what will be posted next week for July is $2,112,000 for the general fund and the new portion.
I think what-
How far are we off? This is last year's.
About $897,000 for the general fund.
So we're down 900 grand for our general fund operating.
And the jail is about $453,000 down compared to last year.
How much?
453,000.
About 1.4 combined.
And then we have to take into consideration, the state just cut our local government fund by 440,000.
That wasn't a very pleasing email that sent to you guys.
No. We're looking at it, we got about, we got about $1.3 million below what we had for revenue expectations this year.
The, for clarification purpose, because we're talking about something that probably the audience and the public isn't aware of, that, well, obviously, I think the governor is still waiting to sign the budget, but in that budget was an additional reduction in the local government fund from the state that they returned to us. My understanding is they actually downgraded the percentage that they returned, not just the dollars. And we're receiving about 440,000 less? Is that an accurate figure?
434,000 in change.
434,000, less than was anticipated, and what was anticipated was at least par for last year. We thought there'd be a little dip, because the revenues were down in the state, and they have tagged it to certain revenue streams in the state, but I don't think that we anticipated at all that they were going to drop the percentage. We dropped almost three percentage points, from the 30 to about 27.2 on a percentage basis. And so now, we're facing between the decrease in sales tax revenue, the decrease in local government support, possibly close to $2 million, and anticipated revenue that hasn't come in, on top of all the issues that we dealt with at the beginning of the year. So we're going to have to find ways of shoring it up, because there is no money to make up that shortfall.
I was on Department Taxation website yesterday, looking at their forecast for next year, talking about a 15% cutoff of 2009 numbers. That's what their investment income is now.
Yeah, our investment income's down also.
Well, it was, pardon me, it was bound to happen, and our investment income's going to be down, too.
Correct.
They're, you know, usually, our yield curve will keep us a little bit high while the markets are moving, and then we'll, as we have to go back to market, because we mature our notes and the things that we carry in, the instruments that we carry in on investments, then we'll have to buy them at a lower producing rate. So our yield curve's going to be dipping, too. And it has already started to dip, but it's going to probably dip a lot more before it comes back out. I remember back in, I want to say 2003, Commissioner Blair, you may remember, we were down almost, just about $1 million, $1.2 million in interest income from a high of about $6.5 million.
We just had $8 million a couple years ago.
Well, that was two years ago. We were able to ride out that spike, because we had all that carryover. And so we would dip into the carryover, ride out the yield curve, because it goes up and down every couple of years. We don't have the ability to ride it anymore. We are living 100% on every income dollar that's coming in. Every time there's a change in the income, there's going to have to be a change in the structure of how the county is doing its work, because we don't have that carryover anymore.
Just a little bit of information for you, since you're talking about interest, was the treasurer's estimate next year for his income in interest is $1.9 million.
Wow. And what did he estimate this year?
This year, $3 million.
And he has increased that estimate, or he's working on increasing it? Is he not?
I think he's going to wait till a little bit later in the year to try and be, it looks like right now, he's going to come real close to that.
But he's doing better than his estimate. So he's really being conservative.
Yes.
I have a question on the Criminal Justice Fund. There has been estimated $7 million for the sales tax income, is that correct?
Yes.
That's a little low, isn't it, for the year? That's estimated.
It's actually high. That would be actually for six months' collection.
Right.
We had figured it would be 7.5, right? I just figured the sales tax coming in lower.
Yeah.
Okay.
When it was robust last year, you probably could have figured about 7.8.
Right.
But I think that what's being done, and I have not had the opportunity to ask the question, clearly, the tax is going to be up for an issue of being maintained in November. And I think that the only thing we know for certain is that we'll do, you know, approximately six months worth of collections next year, and I think that that's what the revenue has been banked on. And then that can be revised based upon our successful outcome in November.
Thank you for that clarification. I just want to point out, on the total receipts and balances, on the front page of the information that we have, shows 2007 actual, and then 2010 estimated, and there's almost $29 million difference between 2007 and 2010. $29 million less.
Well, that is because of two things. The revenue is down, and our carryover is depleting.
Regardless, it's less.
Yeah. Tough times.
Yep.
Everywhere.
Anything further?
Nope.
Did I make a mistake?
No.
Oh, so moved.
I'll second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under LCT, War Contracted Tussing Builders, LTD, Monroeville, in the amount of $164,160 for Lorraine County Transit Maintenance Facility, showing general trades. Five bids were received in July 2nd, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed letter honored before July 27th and complete honored before October 24th, 24th. Authorized County Administrator to notify auditor to release retain and reject completion of project, and this will be paid from the construction account.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cortez, the construction account under the transit, or what construction account are we talking about?
I'm not completely sure what it is. Ron, you've been working on this issue. I actually believe it's going to be under transit, and it's going to be the FTA money that we receive, but I want to make sure.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct. Under transit, construction account, and it is FTA dollars. We've split that bid into two different bids. This is so that we can get the steel and the structural stuff. There's a six to an eight-week lead time on ordering this steel, so if we waited to bid the whole project, we'd lose that six to eight weeks.
I'm hoping this is American-made steel.
It has to be. Federal dollars.
Okay, thank you.
So that's another reason to split out, so we can get that going. And we also took a reduction, this is part of the funds, we took a reduction in to move money to operating costs with regard to the stimulus money. So we're just taking a real strong look at what we can do in this project, because 10% of the anticipated budget, we moved over to operating transit. So we're just juggling a few things.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair. Aye.
Reject bids received on April 3rd for the purchase of 13 new cutaway vans, authorized purchase of vehicles from ODOT, state term contract 248.08 from Tesco. This will be paid from the accounts, CMAC, total revenue credit and stimulus. This is 100% capital funding, requiring no local match.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Maybe we want to talk about what these are?
100%, no federal match. Love that.
No local match.
Or no local match, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Ente has worked very hard on preparing this with First Transit. We're basically buying 13 Ford E450s with a gross vehicle weight of 14,050 pounds. The cost under the state term bid is going to be 54,837. We actually bid this locally, and the bids were open on April 3rd. As we kept reviewing our bidding process, it was determined there was a technical defect in our bids, and then when the state terms come out, it was fairly comparable in prices. So we've elected to reject our bids and buy off the state term. The 13 buses will not exceed, and it is 100% federal dollars or state dollars, no local money spent. The total for the 13 buses is $7,712,881. It's important that we do this fairly quick, as we talked during the transit hearings, because, A, we're leasing several buses, that as soon as these show up, we can stop leasing, and B, because of the age of our fleet, when this is 100% money to buy, we will reduce our maintenance costs on our old buses. So the costs will go down to operate.
No, only if he's ran on natural gas, it'd be all there, huh?
If it would.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Thank you, Ron.
Under the engineer authorized release of Loshur Excavating Company, one-year maintenance bond for Copper Creek Subdivision, Amherst Township. The storm sewer system was inspected on July 6th, and the township has approved.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair. Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have no further reports or discussions this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor.
Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I need to have an executive session to discuss one, two, three, four, five.
Oh, my gosh. Are you serious?
We can probably get away with four pending litigation issues. Sorry.
You got to include five just in case it comes up.
Yeah.
Commissioner's report.
I have no comments this morning.
Busy week, especially with what was happening with the budget bill. I'd like to thank the state legislature for finally passing something. We'll see how it goes. The county was saved. Some additional expense on the changeover from the family court back to the probate court. Like to thank our representatives for that. And hopefully they'll get the money rolling for all the daycare people so they can get paid and pay their bills. I know we're waiting on that. And we'll see what happens with the budget and the slots. So if it doesn't get held up too long, so we start generating revenue, and maybe our local government funds will go back up where they belong.
Wouldn't that be nice?
That would be different, I think. I'm finishing my report. Thank you.
Nowaka has sent information to us on their commuter challenge week, which is July 18th through the 25th. There is some information in the back. It's promoting alternative forms of transportation. And during that time, they ask people to try out a greener way of getting to work, such as carpooling, riding transit, bicycling, walking, or telecommuting. The goal of the challenge is to reduce air pollution by introducing the public to alternatives to driving alone. For more information, you can contact their website and I'll put that information to half. And that's it for me.
Board of respondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion?
Aye.
Ms. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Blair? Aye.
Double camera?
Anybody wishing to address the board? Any comments this morning? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator and the assistant county prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Blair? Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend. Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving 13 counties, secure and safe Ohio RideShare makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. 1-800-825-RIDE or register online at ohiorideshare.com. Hey, buddy, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Otterd. I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover. She gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me and she will pull the covers back and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorain County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work or anytime you come home, it's just always nice to kind of turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door and they wagging their tails and jumping on you. And it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention. And she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes when she does something bad, or she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look. So it's kind of hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around. And I was like, oh, my gosh, Lily's good to play now.
Yeah, because like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down and she always like tries to bite her own tail. And then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger. So we had a burger and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch. And I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips. She had eaten the whole thing. And I was not very happy with her. So I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me because I was just so upset. But we both lived and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was again just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play. And it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise because I need to, trying to lose weight. Salem makes me get out of the house every day. And so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroke him. So I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired and he lays down and he doesn't want to be bothered. And that's fine with me. So he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow and he's like, don't bother me, I won't bother you. And sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorain County Dog Pound. I found him on the internet, actually. He was, they had his picture on the internet. And so I called and he was still there. And so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out. And there we were. So we rode our way home. So it was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me. And he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog. He's, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, hey, Mom, it's okay. I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorain County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website and I tell Salem, don't you want a little brother or sister? Because they all, they have all these little cute dogs over there and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorain County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee. And you got a great dog and a great companion and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life and will love you no matter what.
Hello. My fellow commissioners and I are here at the Lorain County Dog Kennel on Hattaway Street, just south of Elory City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number and can easily be identified so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a special heart medical care license tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the special heart tag.
The Lorain County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorain County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out. Just click on Dogs to Adopt. There's plenty of dogs to choose from. It's like this little girl right here. This is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you. Take the dog out, take it for a walk. But please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorain County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorain County Dog Kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings, children not educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education or they hadn't had any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School program has been initiated throughout Lorain County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4. Teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorain County and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that or help diminish those type of situations and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights. We have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work. We have operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children. And of course, it's just like anything else with children. When you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60 and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know? Does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us. And we even had one child that came up to us and said, you know what, Ms. Spansky, we were going to cross the street the other day and we remembered, look left, look right, look left. So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light and then our railroad crossing signals actually work. So they're just like, oh, ooh. And we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know? We'll say, well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast and I'm fast and we can run. And of course, they're very enthusiastic and no, we shouldn't do this. So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks. And just because one goes by and the signals stop, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks and they wait till those signals stop and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks. They should walk and continue to look both ways because it's not safe. And they could fall. They could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. It could be very dangerous because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large and you're talking in kindergarten through 4th grade, some of those children are very small children. The main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take, you know, forever. It's way down there. But we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and 1st grade, and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids. A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no, those kids are walking the wrong way. That's dangerous. I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first. And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat.
Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without looking.
The second video, we show 2nd, 3rd, and 4th grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, Asimo! What's up, Asimo? How's it going? Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you're dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Stepping Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming!
See what I mean? Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars. He goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills. One is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Our response has been amazing, not only from the children. We have received numerous cards. We have, I have a whole box of thank yous from children from the schools that where we have, that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we visited this year.
I think it was really nice, because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
Um, I saw that we could, like, know what to do when there's like cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road, so you don't get hurt. You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight. If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to... If they don't know how to cross without sidewalks, I'll tell them how to do that, too, because that's what we learned.
Um, I think that it was good, because I didn't know that you had to look five ways, which were left, right, left, and then over your shoulder, and then ahead of you.
I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids, if they don't know what to do by crossing the road.
It's a good idea, because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection, what happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars. Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to Safety Town, and they learn, "Look left, look right, look left again," and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did Safety Town, and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, "Matthew, remember Asimo?" And he stops, and he thinks, and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do, and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore. We can do what we want, we can take a chance and run across the road. I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs, we still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So I think it was a good review. I think it was done in a fun, learning way, and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.
Hey, buddy, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard. I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part-human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover, she gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me, and she will pull the covers back, and she will lay under the covers, and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorraine County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice, they kind of turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door, and they wagging their tails and jumping on you, and it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they, they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes, when she does something bad, or she, she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look, so it's kind of hard to even, even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around, and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, Lily's good to play now."
Yeah, because like, sometimes, like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail, and then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch, and I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips, she had eaten the whole thing, and I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me, because I was just so upset, but I, we both lived, and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was, again, just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs, and take them for walks, and watch them play, and it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise, because I need to, trying to lose weight. Salem makes me get out of the house every day, and so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's, he's not that much trouble, because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet, because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroke him, so I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good, because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired, and he lays down, and he doesn't want to be bothered, and that's fine with me. So, he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes, he just lays on his pillow, and he's like, "Don't bother me, I won't bother you." And sometimes, when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorraine County Dog Pound. He, I found him on the internet, actually. He was, he had, they had his picture on the internet, and so I called, and he was still there, and so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were. So we rode our way home. So it was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog, he's, he's, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes, and I'm, I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll, he'll come up and snuggle up to me, like, "Hey, Mom, it's okay." I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorraine County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website, and I tell Salem, "Don't you want a little brother or sister?" Because they all, they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if, if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorraine County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog, and a great companion, and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Hello. My fellow commissioners and I are here at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel on Hadaway Street, just south of the Lurie City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number, and can easily be identified, so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a Special Heart Medical Care License Tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the Special Heart tag.
The Lorraine County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out. Just click on Dogs to Adopt. There's plenty of dogs to choose from. It's like this little girl right here, this is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you, take the dog out, take it for a walk. But please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call, or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.
This is our 10th barn. Nope, nope, sorry. This is our 11th barn.
It got kind of boring watching the grass grow, so we thought we'd watch the paint dry.
Well, the Ohio Bicentennial Commission was, was born in 1995 by, by order of the Ohio General Assembly. They charged the commission with the duty of celebrating 200 years of Ohio history, culture, science, and the commission then began the task of planning a bicentennial celebration. The goal was always to include every Ohio county in the celebration. And to do that, we really, it was a grassroots up, instead of a top-down, it was more of a bottom-up approach to the bicentennial, starting with the communities. And we couldn't tell Clark County what to do from Columbus, but Clark County could tell us what they had in mind for the bicentennial. So that was really the tack that we took when, when we sat down and said, "How are we going to plan the bicentennial?" The beginnings in each Ohio county was, was forming groups in each county, and that's where our regional people came in, and they helped kind of light the fire in each county for the bicentennial. And that was kind of hard back then. There was not a lot of kindling to light a fire for the bicentennial, as you can imagine, in 1997 and 1998. So we, we said, "How can we get the word out? How can we spread the message of all things bicentennial?" One of the original regional coordinators, her name is Nicole Moretti. Nicole is a wonderfully creative person from Megs County, down in the Appalachian section of Ohio. We're, they were at a meeting, and Nicole, out of the blue, said-
Barns, barns make a lot of sense in my district. Can't you see this logo all over barns and rural counties all over Ohio?
And about the next thought everybody had in their mind was, "Great, how do we paint a barn?"
The general consensus of the office was, if we could figure out how to do it, we would try it. But I called paint stores, and I called all these places, and nobody seemed to know how to do that anymore.
So Nicole was, took it upon herself to, to see if it could go, and she was in, I forget what town it was.
Barnesville. And was in the Chamber of Commerce in Barnesville, and somebody had to take a phone call. And like any good former journalist, I read the stuff on the desk while I waited, and one of them was a Barnesville Enterprise, and on the front cover of the Barnesville Enterprise was a beautiful barn scotched and painted.
In the photo was a picture of a barn, and on the barn was a logo of the Ohio State University, painted by, at that time, 19-year-old kid.
And I didn't know, but my, my grandfather snapped a picture of it, and he took it to Barnesville and had it developed, and then he took it over to Barnesville Enterprise. And I didn't know he was doing this, but they saw a picture of it and liked it well enough to put on the front page of the Barnesville Enterprise.
And she took that front page, she immediately called the, the Ohio Bicentennial Office in Columbus and said-
I found him, I found him! He's real, and I'm in Barnesville!
It fell into, into place with Nicola coming down at the right time, because that barn of ours had been on the front page of the Barnesville- of ours had been on the front page of the Barnesville Enterprise.
And with that, she went off to find our barn painter.
I think we ended up having conversations over the phone for the next month, on and off, and then finally I went up to Columbus and we talked about doing one barn in every county in the state.
If you go back and look at our announcement of the project back then and the press releases, it was, our goal was to paint at least one barn in each county. We didn't say we were going to do it because we didn't know if we were going to do it. We didn't know if Scott was going to do it. We didn't know if we wanted his logo on every barn. Was he good enough? Did he have the talent? Did he have the skills? Did he have the, what it took to travel from every county in Ohio? I mean, we're talking about a kid.
We had discovered Scott and we decided that we wanted to attempt this and see how it worked out and we chose an out-of-the-way barn in Belmont County so that we could try it, not necessarily directly in the public eye, see how it went, explore the possibilities.
The first barn was in Belmont County because that's the county I'm from. And I think it, we went ahead and did that since it was local and close for me and I even helped pick out that barn. And in those days, we kind of had to go door-to-door to find barns because no one knew of it. And even to describe where we were going, I think, took a little time.
And at the end of three days, we decided it was good enough for local media. We wanted some improvement before we released it statewide and if we would make a decision to do that, it might come at a later time. We invited all the local media, but the Wheeling Register was one of the papers that came. They took a fantastic picture of the barn and they were proud of it. They put it up on the AP Wire and the next morning, we were on the front page of the Cleveland Plain Dealer.
And that's kind of how it began. It began in a very, I like to say we were Madison Avenue geniuses and knew that sure we were going to have great media attention and barn groupies and all that has happened, but it was pretty hit and miss at that point. We didn't know how this project would pan out and if it would even be more than a one-barn project. Nearly 2,000 barn owners have applied to have their barns receive the logo. Now, we can't do 2,000 barns, we're doing one official barn in each county. So, the selection criteria is, we have three things that we look for.
Barns that are made out of wood, ones that are in good condition. That makes my job a lot easier. And barns that are on a high-traveled road so people can see them.
Each coordinator will go out and look at the barns that have applied to have the logo. In some counties, it could be as few as 20. In others, it could be as many as 50. But they will go out and actually look at the barn and see if it meets our criteria. The part of the project that's often overlooked is the part of the project that makes the project possible. That's the person working over my shoulder right now.
Well, you know, growing up, I never, I don't remember sitting in the classroom saying, "When I grow up, I want to be a barn painter."
He just loves art of all kinds and so he experimented, of course, on our barn. But we enjoyed everything that he did.
We could not do this without Scott Hagan. And not just because of his skill with a paintbrush, that's what everybody knows. I know Scott Hagan as a person. I've worked with Scott Hagan and Scott Hagan has become my friend.
The story I always tell to everyone is this. I said a prayer for Scott when he got out of school, that God would find him something in art, because that's what he, his love was in art. So, with tears streaming down my face, I prayed for him to find something and I never dreamed it would be this big and this is what God did for Scott.
He is a wonderful ambassador for the state of Ohio and really is our true, our only true statewide ambassador. He travels to every county representing the Bicentennial Commission.
But the people everywhere seem to be really awesome people, really willing to help you. I remember needing directions on several occasions and I remember a guy, I just pulled over and asked for directions and he said, "I'll tell you what, he'd just follow me and I'll run you right down there." And I know he was busy doing something else, but just things like that, I mean, I'll never forget that kind of thing.
He does it as a professional. He is a wonderful person to work with.
Well, the first interview I had was in Belmont County. I remember that pretty well, that was on my birthday. And I looked into the camera and I thought of the long haul he was going to have, 88 barns, and it just sounded like so much. And so, I remember telling them on the camera, I said, you know, "I just hope that everybody out there will take good care of Scott and I feel that they will." And I just felt like, there's a lot of good people out there, I know there are, and I know he's going to come home and tell me about a lot of these, which he did. And I want to thank those women who put him up because they had no idea who he was, they didn't know what he really was all about and, you know, it's hard to trust people anymore. But he had a lot of nice places to stay and I really am grateful. I'm grateful for those people that put him up. I appreciate it so much.
He is dependable, he's hardworking, honest as the day is long, a consummate gentleman, wonderful with the public, and he's 25-years-old. What are the chances of that? I mean, we turned a 20-year-old kid loose in the state of Ohio and we are much the better for it. I can't say enough about working with Scott. Now, any of the barn followers, there are so many of them out there, have probably noticed Scott's technique, how it has changed and how he would be the first to admit that it's improved from that first barn in Belmont County.
I know that the first few barns were pretty hard with that big script "O" and I had a lot of trouble with the big "O." And the first year and year and a half, I'd mess around for hours trying to get that big "O" right.
His technique has gotten so much better and the style has gotten better and changed. It's much bolder. His lines are bolder from the way he does Ohio to the almost perfect lines of the bicentennial, the way he writes it. The logo flows much freely now, it's not as stiff on the surface.
Well, I never really had any form of art training or people always ask me, you know, "How long did you go to college?" or that. I didn't go to any art school or anything like that, I just kind of learned it for myself. My mother has a lot to do with that and her mother because they have artistic talent as well.
He approaches each barn the same way, looks for the same types of characteristics. Is there a window in the way? Is there, are there vents on each side? A lot of barns, you know, they were working farms, so they need to vent the heat out of the top of the barn. So, if you're storing hay or something, so they're going to have vents, they're going to have windows, they might have a door to use to access the top part of the barn. These are all things that he looks at when he approaches a site, when he sees the site for the first time.
What usually happens is the bicentennial will send me a picture of the barn and then that way I kind of know what I'm going to be dealing with when I go there.
He looks for the type of wood. He prefers a wider board.
This is a real nice surface to work on as far as barns go because it's real flat and they're big boards and it's, I can, the detail's a lot easier to do on a nice barn like this.
The tongue and groove gives him fits. He's always muttering about tongue and groove.
A lot of times I'll get barns that are, I call it tongue and groove surface and there's a groove about every two inches and that makes it not as much fun to do because you've got to get in there with your brush and then it wants to run down all those grooves and-
But the proof is in his work and if you go back and look at his, the barns that are tongue and groove, they are finely detailed. He really takes pride in his work. He will not rush, although I've tried to move him along sometimes and sometimes I try and slow him down.
A barn can take as many as three days and as little as one day to do. Depends on the size of the barn, conditions it's in when I get there, that sort of thing. If the barn side needs painted, you know, that's going to have some time.
But he really takes a lot of pride in what he does and it's evident in all 88 barns. They're magnificent. And I think it's because it's the patient way and the professional way that he approaches each barn. One of the most interesting components of this are the barn, heck, I'll call them barn groupies, that follow Scott Hagan from county to county to county. I mean, let's face it, they're coming out to watch paint dry.
Well, let's see, I've only got five more to go, so what, 83, I assume?
Seventy-four. Uh-huh, and next week, we're going to do seven up in the northern counties, Lorraine, Erie and there, and then after that, we'll almost be up with Scott.
That'll make us 64, I think, of the 88.
We've got nine barns that we've spotted. We've got pictures of seven and so this makes our 10th barn.
Seventy-some. But, and we've got this one to get yet and then two on the way home.
Clinton County, Montgomery County, Ashland County.
Marion and Maro and Logan. One time, we drove like 14-hours and we only get, you know, like seven of the barns. So, usually it's just to go get the barns and then back home again.
Jackson County, Ross County.
It was amazing to us, I mean, they're, you know, planning trips to go to different barns and all these things and they all had shirts and we're like, "Whoa."
And this all got started with me at the painting of the Miami County barn. I was born in that county, so I thought it was interesting that I could see that be painted. So, we went up and spent two days and it was pretty much weather like we've been having in the 90s and hot, but it was wonderful. The second day when he finished, they had homemade ice cream and cookies shaped like the state of Ohio. And so, that was really a nice, it was a lot of fun, it was a fun time.
I saw my first one in Tuscaloosa, number 11. That was in October of 1998. And from there, I just, I couldn't believe it all, I needed all of it.
I said, "How do I get addresses for these?" And she said, "Oh, we can send you all that." So, she sent me up to date, the 67 that had been painted.
We took off and we started doing it and as more that we did, the more we enjoyed it. We got to see different places of the state that we probably would have never have gone before, ride roads that we would have definitely never been on before. And as we started seeing more and more barns, it became interesting to see the different paintings, although the emblem and the symbol is the same, it's always got a little bit of flair to it, a little variety, and it was really a good time for us.
We tried to do seven barns in a day and we would sit down the night before and plan our trip and I had a list of everything. We'd go this road, this road, right, left, and so it took all the work out of it when we went to photograph the barn. We always went to the door, asked for permission if it was all right if we photographed. A lot of times, we didn't find people to help, but a lot of times, we did. And that was the most wonderful experience, talking to those people and they sent us home with wonderful stories, a lot of laughs. And one barn, one couple even sent us home with a basket full of produce out of their garden.
The one in Muskegon, it was way, way back in and when we pulled up there, the man and lady were in their golf carts, they were going, I guess, back to the barn. And they were so nice. They stood there and they got out of the cart and they talked to us probably about an hour and a half and it was really nice.
Yeah, we're barn groupies. When you pull into a barn and there's 200 people there, I guess you've got to consider yourself one of them.
What makes otherwise normal, hard-working, everyday Ohioans drop everything they're doing, drive thousands of miles over the five-year history of the project to sit and watch Scott paint a barn, to take photos of Scott painting a barn?
They're all, all of them are different. I mean, you know, different colors and the way he paints and it's really great. My husband wasn't real red-hot when we first got started with the idea, but as we went along, he's had as much fun as I did because he loves to visit and he loves to visit the older generation and we're finding a lot of those with these farms and barns.
Everybody's been very, very friendly and we've had a lot of neat experiences. Usually, it's hard to leave because they're so nice, they want you to stay and enjoy the time.
It's been great. We've met such good people and talking to them is just something else. I mean, all of them have been so nice and Scott really has really been nice. I mean, he's signed a lot of papers for me and pictures for me and he's a great guy.
And I'll ask these people, "Where are you traveling from?" And they'll say, "Licking County." And I'll look on my map and, heck, that's an hour and a half away or two hours or three hours or four hours. These people are going to those barns.
We're over 5,000-mile. And by the time we do next week and maybe a few more around, the Southern Sciota and Lawrence yet, we'll probably, it'll be over six.
Oh, boy, about 9,500, that would be going, you know, going and coming, you know, getting them.
There was a lady in Shelby County that called and she did know she could make it. I said, "Well, it's going to be a nice project." Well, she called me back to tell me that she would be here. She didn't have to do that, but she just felt like she needed a call and tell me she was going to be there. The barn enthusiasts, I think they've taken ownership of this project. They're very proud of what they've done and very proud of their scrapbooks.
I have a book over here, uh-huh, I have a book, they're all in there, up to date.
Jealous if somebody's got a photo of the Wood County barn before it was touched up and a Wood County barn after it was touched up.
I'll probably be working on it five years from now. I love it.
They trade them back and forth and, "When did you get that?" And, "Have you been to Sandusky?" And, "Have you been to Lucas?" And, "Have you seen the yellow barn in Cuyahoga County or the black barn in Hamilton County?" And, "Oh, it's hard to find, you won't be able to find it, the directions are terrible." We get that call a lot.
Some of these places to get to are a real challenge.
And I'm looking and looking and looking and he's saying, "Did you see it? Did you see it?" Of course, I didn't see it or I'd have told him.
We didn't know where we were at because we knew the barn was around, you know, that area somewhere.
So, I'm looking and looking and looking and-
We wasn't even anywhere near where we were supposed to go, so he showed us this little road to go to and it was really, really way back in.
I've always described the whole thing as a scavenger hunt because the directions are never perfect. Some of them aren't very good.
As I tell people that call the office, "The directions are purposely vague because it adds to the thrill of the hunt." There's a scavenger hunt quality to it.
Well, it's definitely a thrill because sometimes you've been looking for a while.
I'm often asked, "Why is this, why is this project taking on the popularity that it has?"
I think they're universal. There literally isn't a county in Ohio without a barn. It's something we all have close to home and each one's unique and a little bit different depending on the agricultural industry of the area, the ethnic heritage of the area. The barns are shaped different, they're sized differently, they're positioned differently. And so, every county has an opportunity to have something that's uniquely theirs, that they can see the picture and go, "I know that's mine." And yet, they share it with every other county too.
The first footprints in Ohio were agriculture, whether it was Native Americans planting corn, settlers planting crops to, for sustenance and for livelihood, to the agriculture that we have today. There's an agricultural heritage to Ohio. Barns are obviously a part of that.
It's such a big thing. Ohio is, it's just a wonderful place to, where they raise food for just so many things. There's so many different varieties of things that they have. So, it's a huge thing in Ohio and I'm proud of it. I'm really proud of it.
I think barns are a throwback to a simpler time, to, they evoke an Americana that I think people long for, especially right now.
Well, it does. You know, one of the original images in my head, before it even became a spoken conscious idea, was of traveling places with my grandparents as a child. We used to go to Athens to White's Mill in the spring to get the seed and the chicks and the little bunnies for Easter. And coming back, we'd count mailpouch barns and it was like a sort of a fun game on the way, a landmark way to know your territory and see that territory.
I think people enjoy going and sitting in a lawn chair and talking to a neighbor. They enjoy going and sitting in a lawn chair and watching something that is, you don't see anymore, an art form that is from days gone by.
Well, one reason I think barns have been so popular is because no one really does that kind of work anymore. When the mailpouch died out, there hasn't been anything for years and I think people see that it's someone actually using a brush to do, to do work, that's one thing. It's not a billboard. They really seem to pay a lot more attention to barns than they do billboards just because it's just not something that you see all the time.
And I think the bicentennial has kind of made the barns an icon of their celebration. It's, barns are an American icon and we have kind of co-opted barns and made them our own.
I have had so many people say to me, "I've seen barns in this county and that county and whatever." And that's what you hear about is the barns.
It takes us back to yesteryear and makes you feel a little bit like you're part of that time.
And you tend to see things other states and you're not, you don't see anything in your own area, so this gives you a chance to see your own state a little bit.
Well, it's just, we love, we love farm, farm and we love farm people and small-town people. And we have eaten in restaurants in these small towns and the people in there are so friendly and it's just been an absolute wonderful time to fellowship with just the cream of the crop, the farmers and the small-town people. Nothing wrong with big towns, but there's just something about the country. It's a great country.
You know, with everything that's happened in America over the past several months, it's just true Americana. I think that's really, really what says it all.
As the Ohio Bicentennial Barn Project winds down, we are often asked- we are often asked, did we know that it would have this impact? We were not Madison Avenue geniuses. We had no idea what the impact of this project would be. We are thrilled, amazed, and awed by this project. It's allowed us to touch every Ohio county.
One of the proudest things that have happened, in my opinion, out of this is that many of Ohio's barns that were in disrepair, that aren't even part of the program, have been repaired and become symbols of family history. People are painting their family names on barns with dates of founding. And I've seen knockoff bicentennial barns with Big Ohio flags on them. And I have seen barns with Cardinals and barns with John Deere tractors and barns with Holstein cattle. And I'm really happy to see every one of them.
It brings you home. I mean, a lot of us grew, grow up and, and move away from your hometown, but it, it kind of brings you back.
I'm grateful for this. It's been a real experience for our family. And for Scott, it's, it's a dream. I came here yesterday and I thought about the movie, The Field of Dreams. I thought about the cornfields here and, and soybeans and that. And I just thought, you know, God, it's been a field of dreams. And, and I'm so appreciative of it. You don't know how much appreciative I am of it. I, I just am, am so grateful. And I want to thank the Bicentennial Commission. They, they opened doors for our whole family. And I just want to say thank.
Well, I, I would paint thank you really big to everybody that's, that's been part of it. Um, without the bicentennial, I wouldn't be where I'm at. And, you know, I'd like to thank, I have a little something to do with the bicentennial too. So I guess thank you from the barn painter would be just good enough for me. And that would be neat. I guess that's what people call me, is a barn painter, so that's fine.
We're Buckeyes and they say Buckeyes are worthless nuts. But I don't believe a word of it.